Line unmuted.
I pray that the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, in thy name, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Reverend King. Monoselva, check the Christ. Okay, great, great, great. As always, before we start our meeting, there's a few tidbits we have to John Q. The Public or whoever might be listening. There's a conference line has been set up, the number is one dash nine one seven nine zero zero one zero two two. Access code is thirty-two thirty-four seven pound sign. This is not a toll-free number and you may be subject to long-distance charges according to your long-distance plan. When the chairperson open the meeting for public comments, please follow the instructions. Please dial five. The moderator will unmute your line when it's your turn to speak and notify you by announcing the last four digits of your telephone number. Please announce your name and address. You will be allowed to speak for three minutes. Any person wishing to address the board regarding an agenda item will be given three minutes for comments. Next comment, they only speak once, one time for each agenda item. With that being said, we ask for the approval agenda.
Motion approved.
Motion second, all in favor? Okay, we'll go, the next thing on that, on this. I believe we've got one that will be taken off or asked to be removed, that is, number eleven until August seventeenth, right? Okay.
We just need to table that item.
We need to take, you don't need a motion for it? You take it off?
Uh, yes. Do we need to go back and reapprove the agenda with basically that item?
Yeah, just approve the agenda without, with item number eleven removed.
Okay, approve the agenda without, with the eleven being removed. Go ahead, motion.
Motion to approve the agenda with item number eleven tabled to the second meeting in August.
Great, motion second, all in favor? Ah, okay, good. We go to consent agenda.
Please, so, please, the consent agenda.
Second. Motion second, we approve the consent agenda, all in favor? Ah. We go down to number nine. Beds and public hearing. Board to hold the first of two public hearings assessed for this date at six P M. Or as soon thereafter. Know that by the public of possible grant application for the Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program. Go ahead. For the twenty twenty-one twenty-two grant cycle. For funding assistance for additional improvement to the Taylor County Sports Complex. You have bids for that?
No, this is just, um, I think you decide what you're going to submit for, uh, for the application, what projects.
So it's a public hearing and, and Melody Cox is on the line and there were some items she did wish to discuss with you.
Okay, so it's a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. All right, who's on the line?
Uh, Melody Cox.
Mel, it's Mel and the Cox. The line is open. Motion second, all in favor? Ah, okay, good. We go to consent agenda.
Please, so, please, the consent agenda.
Second. Motion second, we approve the consent agenda, all in favor? Ah. We go down to number nine. Bids and public hearing. Board to hold the first of two public hearings assessed for this date at six P M. Or as soon thereafter. Know that by the public of possible grant application for the Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program. Go ahead. For the twenty twenty-one twenty-two grant cycle. For funding assistance for additional improvement to the Taylor County Sports Complex.
You mean on that, for the parking side is? And, and Melody Cox is on the line and there were some items she did wish to discuss with you.
Okay, so it's a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. All right, who's on the line?
Uh, Melody Cox.
Mel, it's Mel and the Cox. The line is open.
Melody, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Hello?
Hello?
Okay, hello?
Hello?
Hello? Can y'all hear me now? Can y'all hear me?
Yes ma'am, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
Okay, okay. Yes, I can hear you.
All right.
Okay, my under, my understanding, the last floor meeting was that you may wish to pursue the construction of a softball field at the sports complex, the funding cycle. But before I go into that, that field on that, I wanted to make sure that, uh, that's what you all, do you anyone like to move forward with?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that still, is that still the consensus of the board?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Uh, uh, okay, well, you should have been given a sheet on, um, the, how the points system works in my recommendations on how to get your maximum points.
Okay.
And, uh, because there's areas that we lose a lot of points in that we cannot fix. For example, um, it's not a partnership project, we don't have a partner that's paying twenty percent or more. So we lose points there. Uh, it does not have connectivity to statewide trail system. That's just examples. Um, I'm gonna try to figure out how we can make a renovation project out of it because that's substantially more points. So, um, with that said, the project, I was giving, um, four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars last year that we submitted to the legislature on the cost of softball field. So I worked up a that figure and, um, a softball field is five points on that grant. And we need to get to, to thirty points as efficiently as we can, I understand that. So I put in a, a picnic facility, which is four points. Support facility, which is the security line, that's six points. Native landscaping is six points. Um, a nature kiosk is six points. And then I thought we could do either, um, parking improvements or we could do, um, basketball court improvements such as restriking. But I looked at the most cost-efficient ways to do it. With that said, if we had tennis court improvements or soccer field improvements that were low cost, that would still get us to those points. And working off of what I provided you, it's got a cost of four hundred, um, total cost of four twenty...
Four forty-one?
Total, four forty-one two hundred.
Yes.
Which has the board funding two hundred forty-one thousand two hundred. Um, what I, I think to get the points actually came out to, you know, about eighteen thousand dollars to get us there to those points. Does that, does that work for everybody? You, you will need your map, um, fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. However, we have three years to extend the grant fund, so you actually could extend that out if you're so if we needed to.
Okay.
It's your chairperson.
Yes ma'am.
I have a question for Melody.
Go ahead.
Melody, when you, when you discuss the parking improvements and the basketball court improvements, that's basically, um, just restriking, correct?
Y- yes, yes, that's why I have that in parentheses because I knew that was the, I know money, you know, the cost is an issue. And I only used the striving because I thought that was the most cost-efficient thing we could do. With that said, you can change your scope of work within that. So if you decided you'd rather do wheel stop someplace or do a small parking lot that had a couple handicap accessibility places. You can change your scope of work as long as it's within that, um, specific area. You also can change, say, down, if you went with that, let's say, a year from now, oh my gosh, we need repairs to the tennis court. As long as you're point that, what you originally had, you can change that too. And, and for example, you also can change around your budget as long as you keep your large amount in primary facilities like right now, the Firdat grant we have for the sports complex. When we submitted the final budget to Firdat, uh, months ago, we actually changed around our budget a lot because the shade covering was substantially more than what we anticipated. And our batting cage costs were less and we were able to use the batting cage cost that we saved into the playground shade covering. Any questions?
I don't have any. Need a motion? Do we need a motion?
I think you still have to have a public hearing.
Another public hearing?
No, you need to ask for, um,
Public comment, public.
From the, from the public? Or is anyone from the public want to speak to this? Any callers? No calls? Well, we need to close this public here. Okay, no motion today. We got another one?
The next meeting will have the second public hearing on regard to half.
Oh, seventy. Okay. Good man.
I, I'd like to say that I, I'm, I'm okay so far with it, the way it is. But I like, uh, what she said is if next year, if, if it looks like something else would be a, a priority, then it can be changed as long as it's within this, well, uh, I'm gonna say cross change. Yes, yeah, so I like that idea and it may not change, but I like the idea that we have the flexibility, uh, to do that.
The next public hearing will be August the seventeenth at nine A M. August seventeen, two thousand twenty-one.
Yeah, the next public hearing will be August the seventeenth at nine A M. Okay, that's our second meeting. Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You got anything else, folks?
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. We go to number ten. John standing to appear to discuss camping in Taylor County.
He must had a work over, he not here. He was at the mail, he must, I hadn't heard from him, I thought he had called. But what he wanted to talk about is there's no place in Taylor County you can carry children to camp legally in Taylor County. A lot of people camp at the goose pasture, but that's Jefferson County. And, uh, there's really no other place that you can go in Taylor County to just go set up a tent or, or tent or not. And he's wondering, you know, if there was some kind of way we could do something about that. So I didn't, I didn't know being most of the land owned by Old Rivers and, and the Horn River.
What about the, uh, all the public access roads along the Inkabini River, Osala River and even, uh, Steen Hatcher, Steen Hatcher River, Steen Hatcher Falls area?
You can go there, but you can't camp. Uh, half my ride, places like that, they'll make a case against you if you're, if, if you're camping. Uh, is what people tell me now, say, I don't know, Hagan's Code, you could camp there, but now, I don't know if you can camp there now or not.
Mr. Chair, my question is who, and maybe the attorney does it all, but who was it that said that we couldn't camp at these places? Is that something that this point, at some point in time decided or was it, how did we get to this point?
If, as you see, it's one of the river management, used to, people camp all up down the Inkabini and Osala, all the landings and stuff like that. And now, it's all controlled by F W C and, and Horn River water management. And, you know, a lot of people from Taylor County go to the goose pasture camp, but that's in Jefferson County. There's actually, like Steen Hatcher, unlike Steen Hatcher Falls down, you know, you can go there, you can fish, do what you want to do, but you just can't camp there. That's what I'm, what I'm saying.
To answer your question, I don't recall anything that your predecessors for the last thirty years did anything about restricting camping. Although, it may be that if you got a grant, that may be a restriction by the grant that we would need to look and see if that was a restriction. And then there might be something from Tallahassee, you know how Tallahassee has, um, limited local control of things as the years pass? We keep seeing it on and on and on. But to specifically answer your question, I have no independent recollection of your predecessors, uh, doing anything about saying no, no camping. I may be wrong, but I don't remember it at all. Do you remember it, anything like that?
Well, I, I, you know, you said that in goose pasture, that in Jefferson County you can camp. So I wonder if, um, I wonder how that, that came to, came to be. Personally, I like the idea of having camping places where we can take our children or if we decide we want to camp. Uh, the, the only thing is, um, if these places are left in a mess, who's going to be responsible for cleaning them up? Is that going to be another task that we have to take on or just, who would clean it, clean it up? Because that's, that probably will happen.
Well, there's also liability too, you know? But my suggestion would be to, uh, contact Jefferson County and say, you know, how did y'all swing that? Just for information purposes for this board.
I'll be happy to reach out to, um, the Jefferson County manager and I can, and I'll be happy to reach out to F W C and to Swanee River Water Management District as well, just to make sure that that's not something that's restricted by COVID or, or perhaps that could change. I thought Hagan's Code had camping areas at one time, but I'm not sure if something's changed. Okay.
Were there, were there any sites specifically that were in, in reference to having camping opened up?
I mean,
because I don't think the county owns any of those places.
We don't. And I, I can understand full rivers situation, they don't want to clean up the trash, lift the campfire. Somebody leave a campfire burning, might set the woods on fire, you know, and that kind of thing. I can, I can see their liability part of it and I can, uh, the county sure don't need no more stuff to have to clean up, uh, trash on. We can't keep it, keep it all clean this and that, you know? Bus or mode or, you know, put care of it. But, uh, if Horn River or F W C, just long as you can contact them and see a parent, then, uh, taking on something like that. I, I don't think people can camp in, in picture map, but you can be there, they are not, but you just can't camp there.
You can't, can't pitch a tent?
We can't sit, can't sleep there.
Oh, yeah?
And, uh, but, I mean, it's twenty-four hour, seven day a week place, but, and, and the river, the landings on some of the Osala, it's got a sign that you're supposed to leave it to the dark, uh, you know, so that's to keep people from camping there too, I'm sure. Uh, John was coming just, just to see if we could do something about it, but we let, us, 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 we wanted to do some research on it and we'll talk it over later on.
Sounds good.
Now, Boy Scout, I was in Boy Scout, we used to go to, we used to walk to Hampton Springs. That was a mess. And camped, I know, and I can walk back, you know, we even have cars to ride in, so that was a long time ago. And we brought all the trash we carried down, it was very little trash too, you know? It wasn't a pickle world, it was the, some tin can world and a rag, you know? The rag you carried from your mama's kitchen. You had to bring that rag back. Okay.
One opportunity you might consider would be the Hampton Springs site. You know, not the, not necessarily the hotel site, but the area that's intended for equestrian stuff on the other side that you could consider primitive camping, just because you don't have sewer facilities as such. But that's a, that's an area that's kind of open and accessible, plus you have amenities across the street as kind of an attraction.
You mean on that, where the parking side is, on this side of the fence?
Yeah, I mean, on the back.
That's great. Plus there's, um, pretty good sized wood, I think it's like a twenty-something acre tract total that's there. That's at least something to consider if you were not successful with some of the other governmental entities. You at least have that piece of property that you could, you know, do as a test space or something.
Well, and now that we have a full-time attendant at the site, it is easier to, um, to oversee.
Okay. No comments?
I, I believe we have a member, um, Mark Viola has his hand raised, he'd like to speak. Mark Viola.
Mark, go ahead.
Okay, try, try now. They need to speak to him again.
Mark Viola. Mark Viola. Mark Viola.
We lost him.
Lost him?
Maybe he'll call back.
Okay. We go to number twelve. The board consider insurance committee recommendation to accept the rate pass for employees' health insurance and team division insurance to Humana for fiscal year twenty-one twenty-two as a judgment by the clerk of court. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir. The insurance, the health insurance, which is what they call rate pass, which is no increase, no changes. So everything stays the same and that's guaranteed through September the thirtieth of twenty-two. And, um, with the vision insurance, we're recommending changing there only because I associate that the only place in Taylor County that's offering vision right now and they're not in the network with the current company we have, so we're going, so we're suggesting changing to a company that they are in the network with, that, you know, that has someone local who uses provision insurance. Um, and there's a little bit of a difference in price, but it's not, it's not a lot. Um, so anyway, that's, those are the, um, recommendations of the insurance committee and, you know, I just want to say, you know, we just, always the chance is going to increase next year and probably a good chance of it increase next year. So we just need to keep that in mind that, you know, there's a good chance that, that the insurance cost will be higher next year, so. Not going to answer any questions if you got any, just, you know, about our insurance.
Mr. Chairperson?
Yes ma'am.
Do you recall when our last increase was? Um, I know we've had at least two years of, if not longer, of rate passes.
Right. I think we had an increase last year, didn't we?
I think we did too.
Yeah, I think it was last year was our, and that was the first one we'd had in a little while.
How much was that?
Um,
Did we actually have a increase or did we change? Did we change? If we had an, an increase, it was very small.
Yeah.
I thought the last increase was when the sheriff came home.
Well, that's what I'm asking and that was three.
I think that was the last increase we had.
That was three years ago.
Year before that, yeah.
Is that three years ago? It's, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so we, yeah, that was, um, last one we had, so. It's been working good.
Ma'am?
Why are we, uh, why are they predicting that we're going to have an increase next year? And, and is it going to be a little increase or a lot if they already know we have an increase?
And, and is it going to be a little increase or a lot if they already know we have an increase? Do they have that information?
Well, I, you know, I think that, I think that the idea is, is that if you take a rate pass year after year after year, and we have for several years, that eventually, you know, I have a choice because the cost of healthcare keeps going up. And we keep, you know, leaving the premiums the same, so eventually, the cost, the increased costs are going to catch up with, with your premium, so. But the numbers so far have justified it, because we, they, we watch the numbers, what, what our claims are versus what we're paying in. And so far, the numbers have justified that there's not an increase, so. But I know that we had two high months, January and March of this year, and we had a lot of high claims. That's another, like, like, um, the loss ratio, we typically need to be around seventy or lower to get a rate pass. And it's at like ninety-seven percent right now this year. Now, there's a chance it could go down before we have to do all that, but it seems to be a little higher than, or quite a bit higher than what we typically operate around, so.
I, I, I wouldn't mind myself paying a little bit more if, if the benefits were a little bit better. Because when you have a major event, um, and I did, and I, I compared with other people's insurance. And with ours, you, you can end up with a lot of out-of-pocket money. Uh, so I wouldn't even mind paying more for, um,
Maybe a better policy.
Just a better plan.
Yeah, I think that, so our, um, out-of-pocket right now is, um, let's see, is four thousand dollars for an individual, so that's your.
That's the max?
That's the max you could pay out-of-pocket right now, um, eight thousand for a family.
That's a lot.
From what, from what we've seen, that's low, so.
Maybe, but for me, it was a lot.
I mean, I know it's a lot of money, but I think for, for industry standards, that's low. I mean, if you, you know, from what we've seen. And what we've looked at, again, our double's five hundred and that's, hardly anybody has the double of less than a thousand now, so. We do feel like that the plan is a little richer than the majority of the plans out there, so, but.
There's a lot of orthopedic things that it doesn't cover either. Age that you need when you have an orthopedic surgery.
Yeah, and I think if, if you have something specific, you know, that you want us to look at, you can, you can, you can let me know and, and, uh, you know.
Well, it's too late now, but.
I know, but I mean, if there's something that, that you, you know, you feel like that, um, would be beneficial for the program to have for other people, then just, just let us know and we can always take a look at that.
I will, I will.
If it's not covering it. But, you know, we try to, um, we, we, you know, we try to keep it, um, the premiums are going up too high, so. Um, we've found that it's the same, anytime you start tweaking it, you're probably not paying more, what you said, but.
Okay, anyone else?
Need a motion then?
Yes, just a motion to.
I'll make the motion then that we accept the rate pass and that we, uh, change to, to Humana for the, um, vision.
Motion second, all in favor? Aye. Number thirteen, Board to Consider, Approve the Request to Allow the Taylor County Sheriff Office to Keep the Grant Reimbursement. As adjourned by Sheriff Wayne Pass.
This is just our standard request, these are grants that are non-budgeted, we have to expend the money upfront when the money comes back. We may not need the money, but at least it allows us if we do.
Would you do a prayer?
Second, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thirteen eighth, Board to Consider Approval of Request for Dual Search to Case Twenty Twenty-One Assessment Role. And Authorizing Resolution as Adjourned by Mark Wi.
Motion to read the resolution, I'll tell you what.
Second, second. All in favor, Mr. Bishop?
Aye. Yes, sir. The resolution of Taylor County, Florida, providing for the extension of the twenty twenty-one assessment roles pursuant to sections one ninety-seven point three-two-three and one ninety-three point one-two-two Florida statutes and provide an effective date.
Motion to approve the resolution?
We got a motion?
Okay.
Second, all in favor?
May I give you another motion?
Okay, I need a look.
Is there another motion needed?
No, I think that's it.
Perfect.
Okay. County staff items. Board to Consider Approve of the North Florida Professional Service Construction Engineer and Inspection C E I Proposal for the Gas Plant Road Widening Research Project as Adjourned by Kenneth Dudley, County Energy Day. Kenneth?
Yes, sir. So this is the final component of the project before we can actually issue the commencement or notice proceed for it. If you recall, we started out with, um, a D O T grant or a D O T, um, award for this that was less than we, um, realized would be for the entire project. We received bids, um, as we expected those bids exceeded the funding. Uh, we reached back out to D O T, D O T said, okay, I want you to get a little skin in the game. So that's when I brought it to you, um, there was an agreement to allow, um, the board to fund up to a hundred thousand. Now, we returned that back to D O T, they answered back with an additional three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars worth of funding for the project. And then that was predicated on, um, an expected C E I expense. Once we got that funding in place, I reached out to my C E I firm, one of the three, and asked for a proposal from them. They use the design engineer's timeline for that project and there are contract rates that are approved and come back with what you see before you, which is a hundred and twenty-three thousand. Taking an add and add to the overall project funding, um, combination, we wind up being thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and three dollars short. So the county administrator and I, we discussed this and she, um, she and I kind of came to a consensus, um, that her suggestion was to, because we kind of haven't been able or successful in filling the vacant engineering spot, that, that dollars or those fundings come from, um, a combination of general fund and road and bridge. That we consider using some of those unfunded or those unspent dollars for this project as opposed to drawing back on the secondary road payment account. So, um, last week, I put together several different budget transfers within those two cost centers, um, to total this thirty-three, eight oh three. And she has reached out to the finance director. We know that in order to do that, it's going to take some budget amendments, those amendments will still be yet to come. But what we wanted to do was kind of present it to you guys and let you know that that was how we kind of resolved to, um, to find a solution for this as opposed to standing up here and asking for additional secondary road payment funds.
How much is set aside for the budget and for the second?
The position is advertised at sixty, I think it is, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Fifty-five versus fifty-five to sixty.
And because it's, um, a budgeted position, you actually have overhead as well. And then one of the main overhead aspects is not knowing what somebody's going to come in, you generally have to budget for a family insurance request. So I, I want to say there was like fourteen or fifteen grand of this was just from that one line item. And then unfortunately with the, our duties and responsibilities were spread across three different cost centers, so I drew on two of those where I could to, in order to get to these funds. At this point in the game, obviously, we wouldn't anticipate, you know, even hiring somebody tomorrow, you only have one month of, of expenses if you can get it done that fast, which, you know. So far hasn't been successful.
You'd hire an engineer.
You'd have to hire it like tomorrow.
Board is okay with it, um, okay with using these funds that was.
As outlined?
First.
As outlined by, again?
Yes, as outlined by Mr. Dudley to finish this project, yes, ma'am.
I said, do you get it going?
Get it going.
Yes, sir, because I, I, I'm, I'm not very big on signing contracts unless I know we've got money. So I needed to get through this part of it, and once I do, then I can issue a pass order to the C E I firm. Once he's under contract, he will send a notification to the contractor and say, the pre-construction conference is going to be on such and such a date. So we, thi- this is kind of one of the stepping stones that has to happen.
All right, in the moment, Scott.
I make the motion to approve staff to use the funding set aside for the second engineer to get this project started.
And unless you're going to make another motion, I would first say, make a motion to approve this C E I proposal and use the vacant engineering position funds to make up the shortfall.
Make a motion, I'll make a motion to, uh.
Approve the C E I proposal.
Approve the C E I proposal.
And, uh, use the vacant engineering.
Second, all in favor?
Just so you know. I want to come back later and say, hey, you never, we actually.
Okay, you got another one? County Minister, to discuss inflation rates.
Tell us something good, Neil.
I just wanted to share with the board that I received a letter from James and Patricia Zerber regarding one of our employees. And I will pass out the letter to you. So we have to do this. I won't read the, the entire letter since you have it in front of you, but, um, they have submitted a letter recognizing one of our employees, Julie Jolly, for her extraordinary employee work ethic, and they commend her for her performance of responsibilities beyond the call of duty. I will be placing a copy of this letter in Ms. Julie Jolly's personnel file. Um, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank not only the members of the public who recognize our employees' hard work, but also thank the employees who are so dedicated. We are in a time when we have employees who are working in multiple departments. Um, I am asking them to do things about, you know, that they would not normally do. I don't want to minimize Ms. Jolly's moment, but I would like to say that, um, I so appreciate the board's approval of salary increases for next budget year. And, um, just like to take this opportunity, not only to recognize Ms. Jolly, but all of our employees who are working so hard. That's all I have.
So, yeah?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Comment and concern from the public for non-agenda items. At this time, if you have any comments, the public, okay?
My name is Mike Weekly.
Okay.
My wife and I came to this meeting tonight in hopes of getting on next meeting's agenda concerning the flooding issue that we have in our neighborhood. There are four other families this year that is in the same problem I'm in that surround us. They were not able to attend the meeting for various reasons. So I am requesting that if we can get on the agenda for the next board meeting and discuss some of the possibilities of how we can improve our situation there in our neighborhood. Sir, I have fifteen inches of water in my house right now, and I have had for four weeks now. I paddle with a john boat out my front door every day to get to my vehicle that's parked on the street. And I just can't believe that there's not, no answer to this problem, somewhere there is an answer to this. But all I've been getting ever since for the last four weeks, well, it's been going on for twenty-five years, but we've never had water like this before. And I'm at my wit's end, we've tried different things, the neighbors have gotten together, pooled money to have water pumped out and it, and that didn't help because it's still raining. And I don't know what else to do, but I'm going to lose my home if, if we, if there's something that can't be done.
We should add this next week.
This one twenty-five Ridge Road, most everybody in the room is familiar with it.
Yes, so be it.
It's a diamond ridge. It's a diamond ridge.
Okay.
Now, what I want to say is, both looking at the radar, the mount rain, that we're going to start hitting tonight. It, it's going to be coming up on my deck and start coming into my living area. And I have this three travel apples, we have two car doors, you come in, my whole, my washroom is here and my closet's here, all of that's flooded. And now it's coming up, three of the steps coming into my living area. Well, if that rain comes tonight like is predicted, I'm afraid it's going to start coming up on my deck. If it starts coming up on my deck, it's going to start coming into my kitchen. We've already got a sandbag on the day trying to stop it from coming in the house. Overall, we limited to twenty-five sandbags. And now we're going to have to go and buy more, we need forty more sandbags. I got to go and buy sandbag to start putting up on the deck to get it from coming in my house.
We're getting, we're dead.
One of the problems was the county coming up there and dug that ditch that's across the road. It's full. Now it's running up and running to the Parker's property. Their property gets full and it's running into my yard. Now I called the county today because the water is across the road and everybody's just flying by out there looking.
Road manager.
So I called the county and asked them, please come out and try to stop him from coming by. Because the only person that lives on that road is the Parkers, it's going to have to have that kind of traffic coming. So from my understanding, I think Mr. Parker called us and said, the county was out there, oh, they were coming to the meeting. So I don't know what's going on there. But I did make a proposal yesterday. If y'all do not see any solution to this problem, buy my house. You can buy my house, both of those down. If you had drawn an area for that property, then everybody will be happy. But I worked a long time to pay for my home and have my home to stay back and watch it just destroy. And at our age, we're going to have to start all over again because we can't get any help.
The issues, the, the main issue is, they don't have nowhere to pump the rainwater. And all this water's run off from the neighborhood, it all comes downhill on us and it has for twenty-five years. And the neighbors, we all went together, pulled a thousand dollars apiece, had an attic tank truck come out and, and he pulled twenty-three loads out of there. It dropped the water in my house lane. And the next night it rained and it came up to me. And it's just, I, I don't know what else to do. I'm kind of negotiating with somebody right now that's close by, that's got some property that I think he's willing to let us dump some water on. But honestly, sir, I think, my best estimate, there's probably six hundred thousand gallons of water in my yard right now.
How deep is it? Eighteen.
I have a small, no, I have a small retention pond, uh, in the back that was there when I bought the property, but it's, it's no bigger than a, a regular sized swimming pool, basically. It's only like three foot deep. And, uh, I had a contractor lined up, believe it or not, I had a contractor lined up three months ago to come and take a look at it because it was dry and it was, all the water was back in that little retention area and I was thinking it was going to dry up and I was going to dig it out. Quite beautiful the size of it. I can't, I can't really go in deeper because the water table's so high there, I can't go any deeper, but I'm just going to make it bigger where it would hold more volume. And, uh, but that didn't pan out. But that area where the little retention pond is, is probably right now, is probably five feet deep. And in my back doorstep, I got a pair of chest waders and I can't walk very fast without getting soaking wet with the chest waders on, this up in here. And in my back over steps, I got a pair of chest wearers, and I can't walk very fast without getting soaking wet with the chest wearers, it's up in here.
Some of the solutions that we might do is just try to raise our house. I would have to need two thousand, a hundred thousand dollars to raise this house.
All we would have then, all we would have then is a three-house, seven-man facility.
Why would I put that money at the risk of house to accommodate everybody in our neighborhood?
And see, we've been told we can't, you know, we can't do anything to change the elevation of our property because it's in a flood zone. And, uh, that didn't turn out to be exactly right, but all I said was, I wanted to put a berm around the house, I may not have used the right word there, maybe the berm is, is, you know, what, what we misunderstood. I wanted my flower beds around the house, I was gonna extend them out a little bit and make them, and jack them up about three feet higher than what they are now, just to keep the water off my house. And Swannie River Water Management in Liva, when I called them, informed me that they had no jurisdiction over a single-family dwelling unless it's located directly on the Swannie River. And their advice to me was, do whatever you deem necessary to protect your property, and don't worry about the rest of it.
But we get told that anything that we do and put water on somebody else.
Yeah, which they just can put a pool in or, or driveways or whatever up the street above it, they get to do all of this, and we can't do anything to protect ours. And we get all of their water.
I would tell them the spirits about it, that the permit should not have been given for that house to be built there. That that was supposed to be the drainage for that neighborhood.
Well, there was two houses built there, the contractor that built them built both of them at the same time.
Well, don't they still stand it?
Yes. One of them's hot water, it's, uh, has surrounded his house now, and it's standing at his front door.
And his house is not up off the ground.
Yeah, it's on the ground. Mr. Parker, across the street from us, that's the reason why he could not be here tonight, because he's jacking up his freezer, he's getting the air conditioning company out there to raise his central unit up, keep it out of the water, mine's already wasted. I bought a five hundred dollar, or a hot water heater three weeks ago, and I had, I had the good idea to put it up on, raise it, it's in my, excuse me, it's in my, uh, washing machine. So when the plumber installed it, I had to put two concrete blocks together underneath the water heater to get it jacked up. And it's now this high, right now, on the, on the new hot water heater that we put the blocks under before the rain came. But it was the, it was the hurricane that got us. It was, it was, we got five and a half inches there at the house from that hurricane, and that's, that's what buried us. And now all these afternoon numbers, we got two inches, when was it? Day before yesterday. So we just.
Yeah, we had that before.
We're, we're desperate, I mean, we've, we've run out of ideas, running out of money, my past, and, and I just don't, uh, there's gotta be an answer, there's gotta be something that can be done.
Oh, we had, you know, out of respect, county commissioners to come by and take pictures and stuff, but that's all that's done. So that's what we want to be able to get on the next agenda.
Yeah, I think, I think the other neighbors that can't, one, the other neighbor that can't be here tonight, both his parents are in the hospital, kind of happy, and, uh, uh, I think that, uh, I think everybody wants to have, wants to put their two cents in, and, and everybody's really concerned about it. And I think it's gonna get worse before it gets better. I've got a, uh, I worked a, a deal out with a neighbor across the street that has a cow pasture, uh, and it's not too far away from me there. And in years past, I've used that to pump my water into.
You got a pond or something on it?
No, he does now, but normally he don't.
Same, oh.
I was just, all I was doing was, was, uh, just spreading the water in his cow pasture, you know, and that's, I'm very limited as to how much I can put over there, I mean, I, you know, I appreciate him letting me do what he's letting me do, so, so, it's, it's not knocking anything out of my, I can tell you.
And there's a street that's up there, I think, to shake out.
Yeah.
Okay, there's some construction going on, permits being given, construction going on, and I'm concerned about what's going on over there by the effect that the water flowed down to my property too. And that's what I would like to be checked into, just to make sure.
You know, there's, there's something crazy going on here because there's places in this county right now that should be neck-deep in water, and there's not a drop of water standing on it. And I'll give you a good example, Bar Creek. There is, we just wrote through that a few minutes ago before we came in here, there is no water there, and that is traditionally a flood area there big time. I don't understand what's going on, something, I've been, I've been told, I don't know any of the details, but I've been told that it's, it has something to do with San Pedro Bay. That I guess the owners, the new owners of that, that area out there, or I was told, was damming up some of the creeks to try to retain more water in San Pedro Bay. And if that's what they're doing, they're gonna raise our water table in, in, in the rest of the county to the point where nobody's gonna be here. I've seen firsthand what, what a big body of water can do to the surrounding areas water table. When Buckeye put that second, uh, uh, pond in over there, that's about a five hundred, I guess, five, six hundred acre pond. And I remember it well, we used to live out there by the mill, I mean, we were relocated because of it, but anyway, I remember when they put, first put the water in that, in that pond, we woke up the next morning to go to school, catch the bus out of the pond, like, we had to wait out, because the bus, man, it rained a lot. That's how much it brought water out of the ground and flooded us overnight. And then they had to pump all the water out of the, the pond, and then they decided, it's a good idea maybe if we're lining it, which they did. But, uh, I, I've seen it happen, I know what, and that's a big pond they're wanting to keep, San Pedro Bay, that's a lot of water they're wanting to hold out there, I don't know why. But if, if they're gonna hold, that's what, six, seven hundred thousand acres probably? That's a big lake. So if, if it's at all possible, I, you know, I would just like us, you know, I would just like to get us on where the other members that are suffering from this can have a chance to come in and say what they would like to say, and maybe we could all get together and work out some, some kind of a, an answer to this. I do appreciate your time, and thanks a lot.
Thank you.
We're gonna have Mr. Wickley and his group come back on the seventh. Yeah, if you want it.
Sure.
Okay. Anyone else from the public who wanna speak? Any of them that's not on the agenda? There's no one else? Okay. Commissioner Newman? Nathan Pigel?
Yes, who was the pastor that, uh, led us in prayer tonight?
Reverend Nathan Pigel.
Na- oh, I thought I recognized him, he was here a, a while back, and he's moved back? Or am I confused with him, with somebody else?
I don't know if he moved away or not, I think we just did not see him during COVID, but I know now he's pastoring at Church of Monticello.
Yes, Monticello Church.
Okay, wasn't he of faith?
No, you're thinking of someone else.
Okay, okay. Well, we really appreciate, um, him coming, and I guess you sent out notices to everybody as the reason that he came to LaGuardia.
Uh, so Ms. Durden actually reached out to him specifically, I think, he was, we have a list that we keep. And he's been so faithful about coming to pray with us, so, uh, if I'm not mistaken, you reached out to him first. But we do, we do have a list that we keep.
And I, I don't have anything else, it's, uh, it's an honor and a privilege for me to serve.
Okay. Fine, okay. Well, then, what else? You sure, Mr. Bixit?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
I thank.
So that being said, what do I hear?
Motion to adjourn.
Sure. All in favor?